Good evening, I'd like to bring to order the reorganization of the regional school committee to order and any nominations for chair.
Ooh, I can do that. I'd like to nominate Michael Lee for chair of the regional school committee for the upcoming school year.
I'll jump into who's gonna second it.
Michael, are you willing to accept this nomination? I guess we should.
You were last year. Yes, I will accept.
Any other discussion?
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Speak now.
All those in favor?
Scott, would you?
Hi. Congratulations.
Welcome, sir. Can we reorganize today?
There you go.
May I nominate Dana White?
Can I entertain any nominations for you?
Oh, there you go.
Is this your friend Dana?
I would like to nominate Dana White.
And Claire might be a little insulted.
Vice Chair. Second. Discussion.
Anybody else? I think you know my feelings. Thank you. Thank you, Dana. Secretary?
Oh, you should have a secretary as well.
May I, you wanna nominate?
No, you can nominate.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Certainly not gonna nominate myself.
Really? I was gonna nominate Claire.
That sounds great. I second.
Okay. Anybody else?
If you're willing to serve, I don't need. Let's go. Call in favor.
And before we turn it over, could we say a thank you to Dana for a great year?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. A lot of, an awful lot of issues.
Some unexpected.
Some unexpected.
Most unexpected.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great year.
It was an honor.
We would not have made it through this smoothly as we did.
It is all yours!
Don't quite be so gleeful. So, we have reorganization on our point for community comments. Do you have any from the audience?
No.
Your way.
Your way. What's up with that? Okay, and then I think we're going to move rapidly on to Mr. Kellert because I think he has some other plans later this evening.
His alarm's gone off in like four hours.
He's asleep. I'll be back at 2:00 AM. You will have a great time these days.
Have a safe trip. Good luck.
You will. It's always fun. Very exciting. Thank you for the opportunity. Congratulations. It's too late. We have a whole bunch of stuff. First, we had nine students participate in the state science fair last weekend and Jean Correll won first place for his project on the analysis of harmonics of the Oba. Oba reads overtime. And honorable mentions were earned by the teams of Grace Quan-Hubby for the effectiveness of Indian bacterial soaps against bacteria and the team of Matty Charity and Joel Celestri for the effect of artificial and natural sweetener on daphnias. And then we had other participants were Lizzie Goldstein, Andrew, Fiore, Kaylee Han, and Henzeke. Congratulations to all of them. You might have noticed I didn't give them the opportunity to bring it in here, but there's still some artwork remaining out there. The seminar left it out from the art festival that was held last Monday. It was fantastic, well attended, and the music department shared their talents as well. So it was a job well done by both the music and art folk. In the packet that you, the report that was forwarded to you, just want to mention again, Stephanie Daly and Jamie Work were recognized as scholar leaders at the banquet in Westboro, Marlborough I should say, on May 20th. New officers newly elected for the class of 2019 with Jeb Schu will be the president, the vice president will be Brooks Andrew, secretary will be Laura Mayer, and the treasurer is Ethan Wood. We've just announced today, not included in your report by the representatives, Camille Baruki will be a representative, Ronnie Edney, John Fattori, and Lila Hubby will all be representative for the class of 2019. Thank you. I won't go into all of the detail, but the national, the world language national exam scores are in your packet. They were outstanding. Of particular note was Lila Hubby, got a perfect score in the eighth grade Latin exam. So they're all going to her. Anna Hurley has been very busy these past months. She hosted on two occasions a middle school summit for area science teachers, which was fantastic, and they're planning to meet again possibly over the summer and continue their meeting and exchanging of ideas moving into the fall. So that's just an outstanding effort on her part to see where we're going with next generation Pine Hill and Chickering will be visiting while we're away with the eighth grade. Ryan Maringer and Kelsey Perante will be entertaining them. Those will be rising fifth graders. And next week we have a host of activities for our eighth graders. That include the lunch hosted by Positive Recognition Night and then a dance following that, and then we have assembly on the last day for us, the eighth graders. And finally, the CAG, there's a CAG update included in the report, just some of the interesting stuff that the CAGs did on their recent day out. Anybody has any questions?
I do have a question. On the science fair, this was the, amongst the other weeks, this was a first prize for the state?
Yes.
That's spectacular.
It's fantastic.
And then, is there any thought to display those projects in the school? The reason I ask is, I did science fair when I was out in Arizona, and we ended up putting them in libraries all over the city after a big science fair. And it was actually very well received. And so they could go here, they could go into the town libraries, and it would be nice to have them out and about for people to really...
I've talked to Mrs. Webber.
Great idea.
Yeah, that's fantastic. We have display cases here, but also I know public libraries would be nice. Investigate. School improvement plan. The school improvement plan has three goals. I think that's consistent with the goals of the district. And the goals, the first goal focuses around creating a safe and nurturing environment, and the focus of that is on challenge success and continuing those efforts. We in fact met today at Mrs. Webb's house this afternoon for what? To just brainstorm ideas, share what has happened, and as we were sitting there talking with the elementary schools and John and myself and other folks from middle school and high school, there's been a substantial amount of work already done, but it's exciting to look forward. And I think what we need to do now is engage the students and parents even more. We have book clubs for parents, and there's been some work with the students, but to engage them more as we move forward.
Yeah, I interrupt, that entire packet with an extensive summary by Alan Shaggy of the events over this year. I read that with a previous reading, but I wanted to say that publicly. It's a very comprehensive book and very well done.
Yep. Absolutely. So that would be the, the first goal is around challenge success and creating a safe and nurturing environment for learning for our students. Second goal is continuation of the implementation of our evaluation system, which in fact at the, at the meeting, we had faculty, we greet faculty meeting this afternoon, the folks in our building who are trained as qualified peer observers, QPOs, presented, they've created a flyer. So they, you know, it's new, so teachers naturally have a little bit of, there's some uncertainty with it. So those folks, and we have I think eight members at the middle school who were trained, they went through the course this spring, really put to, put to rest any angst, I think, in any that was remaining in staff members about the process and how it would play out. The last goal, and probably our biggest undertaking, will be that of working with the English department, but also more importantly, the close reading. And I included in here a definition in the school improvement plan, but there's also a quick, close reading overview that was provided to us by Martha Widdaker, who we are looking to bring into work with the staff, the academic teachers, very closely on reading in their content areas. That's been something the staff has been asking for for quite some time, and it, reading certainly falls under the English Language Arts Department, but the skills for reading and understanding in content areas needs to be understood by the close area teachers. So we have a plan to bring her into work with those departments. I believe it's six, six times during the course of the year. We're gonna use a lot of early release time, and she'll be here for the full day, and she'll be able to get in model lessons in classrooms, observe, and then dialogue about lessons that she's seen in classrooms with staff, in addition to teaching the strategies themselves.
And the professional development. Did you mention that?
Oh, the professional, yes, we purchased, sorry, the cover of this, that we purchased for all staff members, including our EAs, copies of the textbook notice and note. So that was there for their summer reading, although it was a rainy, lousy day or two to read that. So when we come back, we will start in one of the first two days before the students arrive with the initial training for introduction of close reading.
And I think as we start talking about these goals, I think one of the things that I'd be interested in is how do you know when these things are successful? So I know that there is a, you have the professional development, and that's all good, but the so what? How do you measure success, I think, would be, and in whatever way you guys deem is measurable and achievable and all of that, but I think that will be interesting to know whether we're achieving these goals.
Perhaps in the details of the district goals, we're looking at, to survey students ahead of time for strategies they may employ, and then post-surveying for students. So we're looking at the application in the classroom. Additionally, Mr. Kellert had mentioned in the supervision evaluation process, so you notice and note those strategies being used, plus additional things.
One of the, what the English department has provided is a potential goal. We certainly have a mandate, a professional practice goal, but we're gonna provide for them a potential professional practice goal around the close reading, and in that, it would be part of the evaluation system, but also we're going to observe classrooms, either walkthroughs or formal evaluation observations. We will be looking for those types of things being implemented in classrooms. And ultimately, it'll, we anticipate, not next year, but moving forward, we will see an improvement in open response questions. These are the types of skills that we're looking to focus.
That kind of anticipated question I had is, is it for those types of comprehension exercises that are tested in an M-PAS environment, it's reinforcing that? Does it also have a longer-term retention objective? And again, does that hopefully have an impact on some of these common measures or other type of chapter?
I would say all of the above.
Because if anything, it's the longer term.
It's, there's a longer term, there's immediate, we'll see, we'll see the strategies being implemented, but ultimately, it will be a longer term. And ideally, this won't be something that we'll stop after next year. We would want to continue, maybe not to the extent we do it next year, but we want to continue revisiting it. So teachers keep up to date and active in implementing the strategies.
I just have a quick question, and I don't know where it would fit, because I don't think it was, it really doesn't fit in any one of the three that were highlighted here. You know, certainly one thing that's come up a lot in the positive meetings and I've heard elsewhere is the inconsistency with how much is online in terms of teacher lesson plans, homework, et cetera. Is there any place in the current school improvement plan where our, our being online, having, being, having everything more accessible online is part of that?
There has not, but there, you know, we're constantly encouraging our teachers to keep their websites updated.
Okay, but there's no official, I just, I couldn't remember. So there is no official thing in the school improvement plan that deals with that issue?
No.
Okay.
But certainly an expectation to post your handle on...
I know, I just say, in terms of the question of measuring how we're doing, that, how we're doing on that would not be a factor in how we're evaluating the school improvement plan. That was just what I was curious about.
But it might be part of your teacher evaluation.
That's very cool, too.
Yes. And what you'll see is it's called close textual analysis at the high school.
Yeah, so it's gonna say it'll blend very nicely, close reading, with what our English department is doing through the high school and through the CTAs. And actually, also fits nicely with the document-based questions that our social studies department is using. So a lot of similarities there. It'll flow nicely for our kids.
And the input-based, I don't know if it's a project given the science process.
Yeah.
It all connects, and it's really students gaining access to the text and how they use that text to synthesize the information reflected and use it in a different way. And I applaud the efforts of Mr. Kellert, Mr. Man, and Laura Mahmam.
Is this format standard for school improvement plan, the three columns? Or is that our format?
That is the format that we have.
We've had it a long time.
And again, this might be, this is a conversation probably for long. I'm not asking to change this one, but maybe for next year's. I think that we should have a column on there of how do you measure success? Because it's one thing to say, here's where we're focusing on, here's who's gonna do it, and here's what the time is, but how do we know we're successful? Seems like illogical, and maybe that's what comes out when we do the district goals, and that's where that measurement lives. But to me, this, the one thing that's missing in this document is how do we know, what do we do with this information?
There sure are inconsistencies, because the high school does have evidence of accomplishment.
Ah, there you go.
And it isn't that Mr. Kellert and Steen haven't thought about that, it just, it hasn't been part of the format.
In that particular document.
And maybe that's something as we look forward, how do we have a format that does those things? And at the Sherburne School three of us, we've had the same conversation. So we'll look to maybe synthesize the way our school improvement plans are presented.
I'm sure superintendent may have some, some preferences and insights on that.
So may I make a motion?
Yes.
I will move to make a motion to approve the middle school's school improvement plan for the 2015-16 year.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Call in favor?
All right. Okay, here she goes. Enjoy.
I just looked, it's 90-ish.
Is it really 90 there?
Yeah, yeah. Good luck.
This is Washington DC in the summer.
We're assigned to pick up lots of water.
Don't lose any of them to a sudden thunderstorm with tornado winds.
No, we'll...
Michael!
That was the highlight one year, I know.
Yeah, I think I got home about 4:30 that night. We didn't take off till after 1:00.
Have fun. All right, have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Mr. Smith. And would we also be approving his improvement plan?
Yes, sure.
Because I just, I noticed that there was not a, a long rotation.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. All right, thank you, Mr. Lee. Congratulations, Dr. Ladue. I first will just give a little synopsis of some things happening at the high school. Wanted to let the regional school committee know that Jeff Parcells, our incoming athletic director, has been in contact with me. We've met a few times already. He has been in regular contact with Sue Conley, reaching out to each of the coaches. This Friday, he's gonna be on our campus, and he's gonna be meeting with student athletes during break, and he's gonna be available to be meeting with coaches afterwards. We have asked Jeff to be the person to conduct the incoming ninth grade parent meeting, which we think that will set a really positive tone, and so the parents can meet Jeff and learn a little bit about Jeff and what's expected. And in addition, I also requested that Jeff be present for the last athletic advisory committee meeting. I will somewhat run the meeting and then turn it over to Jeff, maybe perhaps for the second one or the first one he does in the fall. But once again, to start transitioning and start bringing forward ideas, and really for him to get accustomed to some of the programs we have, and for him to get to know who some of the people are. So we're really excited, and as I said, Jeff and I have been in touch probably half a dozen times, just over a number of different topics. We toured the athletic facility as well, looking at everything. So I'm excited, I'm excited. I think it'll be great. I wanted to recognize two students, Natalie Andrews and Amelia Walsh. They are in your packet for receiving the Girl Scout Gold Award. Incredible achievement. I will say, one of the things that's quite impressive about Dover and Sherburne, and Sherburne in particular, is the strength of their scouting program, both from the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. It's a remarkably strong program. Community is completely 100% behind it. I think that there's a culture where a lot of people are invested in that, and I think that's fantastic, really appreciate it. Only 5% of all Girl Scouts earn this award, so it really is quite an accomplishment. They're two really, really nice young ladies who give back to their communities, but certainly our high school as well. I also have the pleasure, since Mr. Kellert always is ahead of me, of presenting the rooms to each of the regional school committee members. Pass those down. Dr. Ladue, I have a copy for you in my office.
Thank you, sir.
So those are for you to enjoy. Thanks to Scott Huntune and Kelly Manise as the advisors. It's a series of poems, short stories, pieces of artwork. It's really a neat book, and it showcases the talents that our students have, and it allows for their creativity in the area of art and literature. So feel free to peruse at your leisure.
Can I just ask, is it always this beautifully presented? This is really quite striking?
It is. This one, I will say, I think is one of the best I've seen in a while.
Okay.
But yeah, it really is. We were really proud of them and really impressed. We had some incredibly talented artists, and Scott Huntune and Miss Manise do a nice job. And of course, our fine performing arts staff members also contribute too. So really, it's a nice team effort that people really engage well in. So thank you for your support of the arts. And the final piece that I have, last week we capped off a fantastic senior week. We began with our senior dinner boat dance. We had some rainy weather, but I will say, the kids had a fantastic time. They danced. I can't say the number of kids who said, "Best dance we've ever had." And I think really it was just because they were able to just be with one another. The boat was great, the food was great. Thank you to a number of chaperones that we had, and the people on the boats said how well behaved our kids were, respectful, and our kids looked great. Apparently, the bow tie is back in. There's a lot of bow ties, which I love to see. That was great. Tuesday, we had our Baccalaureate, a wonderful community event this year, it's held at St. Teresa. And once again, fantastic speeches, musical performances by vocal ensemble, by our a cappella, as well as Mary-Kate Sharon and Caroline Body performed a Dixie Chicks song. And I'm always amazed because somebody like a Caroline Body, who, you know, talented athlete, excellent student, and, oh, by the way, she can play guitar and sing. So you just, you sort of just, okay, wow, this is great. So that was a really, really nice evening, and I think it's great for the community to celebrate that. Wednesday, we had our senior awards night. I want to thank members of the community who present scholarships, certificates. I want to also thank numerous organizations, there are a number of families that present. It's a wonderful capstone evening for our seniors. I know that we had some recipients here. Dana's daughter, Alex, as well as Sarah Jane Graham, Claire's daughter, received awards. And that really, for me, is a nice evening. And then we capped it off with graduation on Thursday evening. We had fantastic weather. I have to say, probably the best weather I've ever had as a principal.
I was gonna say.
Ever, and I was sitting there thinking, all right, I'm not gonna ever get this again. And last year, it was rainy and kind of humid, and, you know, we made it work, but we were very, very fortunate. Kids were fantastic. Really was just a nice ceremony. So congratulations to Sarah Jane, congratulations to Alex. It was definitely a proud evening for us, and we were able to cap it off with a nice send-off to our seniors.
It was a very happy evening, and the class themselves really, I think, enjoyed the evening.
They did.
It was all about them.
Yeah, yeah, they did. It was really, it was nice.
That's true.
It was really nice. So that's what I have for my update. And then in terms of my, our school improvement plan, our formatting, you know, as you can see, is a little bit different. We have some different categories. We have six, and despite having six goals, you know, some of them are, we continue through, and I felt this though is important for the town meeting component to still stay in here as a goal, because each year, we have these town meetings with each of our classes. It's run by our student council and class officers. They do a lot of work. I believe in your packet, we also included administrative responses to what they brought forward as concerns. And I want to thank the student council, because what they did this year is, instead of just listing all of them, they really looked for themes. So just like we might look for trends in data, they really looked at themes and said, okay, this is what a number of classes said was a particular issue, and they wanted to address it. So we will continue that. We are also talking about having some breakout groups begin next year with these town meetings. So we would provide the larger town meeting format, but then some smaller groups where we could actually focus in on a project or two that we identify as an issue. And we're also looking to involve the town meeting format to address some of our challenge success student intervention work. So that's our, our first goal. Evidence of completion and accomplishment. We want to have at least, you know, students will choose one idea, area of concern, develop and implement a strategy. So really something where we take that concern, something which isn't a quick fix, fix a pothole, okay, we can take care of that, but something that has a bigger impact on a larger portion of our student body. And I will be interfacing with the student council throughout the year to see how we're progressing through that, helping them where I can, and then we'll bring that result to end of year class meetings, if not earlier. Our second goal is also continuation. It really is one of the things that for us, we really stress and look at, is that social emotional well-being. Certainly, some of it includes challenge success principles, but it also includes other areas such as our social norming committees, just our overall reports of stress, in some cases, programs that would enable students who have struggled with an illness when they return back to school, ways in which they can catch up. So we want to develop and expand initiatives to address these concerns. As you can imagine, at Dover Sherburne High School, if you become ill as a student and you are forced to miss a good chunk of school, it can really set you back. And so I think one of the things we need to look at is, and this is for all levels of students, we need to look at some programs where we can help support those kids. And Ellen and I are working with, in some cases, special education, if that's where they happen to be, but we're also looking at regular education to kind of develop a reentry plan for these kids, reintroduce what we feel is manageable work for them. Ellen has probably talked to you about, we have a number of different programs. One is called Gradpoint, in which students can actually catch up on some of their missed work while they're out, or while they return, they can be continuing to work on their academic work in a reduced schedule with some other options. So really, it's a, it's a means to get kids back up onto their feet and to continue to achieve at the highest possible level that they can.
How frequent do you current, so is it, you know, you've got a week absence, a several week absence?
Yeah, it's certain, right. It would certainly be something probably in the range... It would certainly be something probably in the range of eight to 10 days, something beyond that. Typically, within two to three days, you know, we would send work, we would develop a plan. But we're really talking about somebody who may have had to be hospitalized, somebody who, you know, may have had surgery and was in extended illness, that type of thing. So, it's not a large population, but it has impacted all academic levels of our kids. Right.
No, I understand the impact, it's more of the frequency.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. And our guidance councils are responsible for those situations where a student's been out, you know, maybe two or three days. We also expected the teacher, once again, I'm talking to Carolyn's point, about posting that information on the websites. And there's really, with technology, there's no reason why we can't have that information up there for students, if they are well enough to access it. So, that would be our second goal. Our third goal is similar to that of the district goal around challenge success. As Mr. Kellett pointed out today, we had our final end of the year meeting for our challenge success group. And really, what we want to develop are some student skills with regards to resiliency and stress reduction. We fortunately have received some grant money through DSEF. We've also received monies from an anonymous donor, so we are going to be bringing some outside programs in. And one of the things that I'm going to be looking at with our new athletic director, as well as our play and musical directors, is an extracurricular schedule that really creates more efficiencies, meaning the overall time that our kids are spending in their extracurriculars. I want to make sure that we are putting forth the very best production we can. I want to make sure that our athletic teams are competitive and are competing at the highest level. But I think there are places where we can improve. I think that there's ways that we can streamline some time. Some of our sports are a little more difficult if they're off-campus. Hockey is one, sometimes skiing, you have some difficulties. But I think as a district, we've talked about really kind of pushing things back a bit, having nothing start later than 6:30. And one of my goals personally is to look at one day a week where we're able to get our kids home by 5:30, at the very latest. Will it happen? I don't know, but that's what we're pushing for. I think that if we're talking about trying to allow families to have reconnection time, then as a school, we have to provide it. You know, we have to say there isn't a practice going on or extending. So, it'll be, you know, this is an aggressive goal, but it's certainly something that I think hits at one of the sources of stress for our students. They want to perform well, yet they need that time. They need that time to get home to their families and have dinner and have some time to, you know, think about some basic things that they might want to do, communicate with a brother or a sister, and have dinner at a halfway decent time. We will have some barriers, you know, if it's an away contest, or if it's Tech Week during our play, and we understand those. But overall, we're kind of looking at a schedule that is going to be a little bit more realistic for our kids. That's our goal.
I do have a question. No, we pushed athletic, the start time of practices back from 3:15 to 3 o'clock, and yet, nobody got out any earlier.
Right.
So, some things.
Should go to 3:30.
That's right. And it's one of the things that I have spoken to Jeff Parcells about. I said, you know, we push this back as a way to have our practices start earlier, some of it for supervision purposes, but also, the other intent was to get kids home earlier. We even see that. So, you can't just extend the time. Studies have also shown that a well-organized practice that runs 90 minutes is sufficient. You know, it's like a good lesson plan. If you have a certain amount of time to develop and run a lesson plan that's going to be effective, that's what, the time you have that's allotted. So, we'll work through that. And I know that, you know, there'll be some struggles, I'm sure, but I think it's important. Fourth goal is, we're looking at a new mid-year and final process where we move to by period instead of by academic discipline. The thought behind this is, once again, well, it's multifaceted, but it's challenge success based in the sense that, right now, our mid-years and our finals are based upon an academic discipline. So, Monday, the first exam for a mid-year may be English, and then the second one that same day would be math. So, we do three days of those exams. Yet, the week before, what do we have? The electives. So, really, if you think about it, our mid-year time period is really two weeks. It's not three days. It's really two weeks, because kids are completing projects, they're doing other things. This format, which is what a lot of schools use, would be four days. It would go by the period. It would enable a kid who has a first-period history class to take that exam, and then say their second block is a DR. They would not have an exam that block. So, it would have some built-in study time as well. It would extend things from three days to four days, yet in the big scheme of things, we would be shortening the entire exam block. It would also enable teachers of record, the classroom teachers, to proctor their own exams, because right now, we create this crazy schedule of proctoring, and you may have a science teacher sitting in on a English mid-year, or worse, you may have a social studies teacher trying to sit in on a physics exam. A student may have a question, they have to wait until those teachers can rotate around. And those teachers are going to five or six different rooms. This way, and we talked to a lot of students, and one of the things they kept saying is, it'd be nice to have our own teacher there, because we're accustomed to those testing formats. We still, with the regional school committee's permission, would still like to keep the half-days. We would only have two exams a day. We would have the break in between, just like we do. We would build in additional time for 504s and/or extra time for special education components. And we would also be able to essentially eliminate the controversy that exists around red line week. So, now, we would be able to say, all quizzes, assessments, et cetera, must end by Wednesday. After that, you have some review time. We're hoping to give the Martin Luther King Weekend as a study time for it, and then take the exams Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then, all students would actually have that weekend afterwards as a homework-free weekend. And Scott Kellett and I are coordinating to have that be a 6 to 12.
So, John, the one good thing about the current schedule is that you have a writing block, so an English with a science.
Yeah.
And will you maintain that?
Not necessarily, however, we've looked at. They might, they might have to run a given day, yet they would have a shorter writing block, because the exams would be 90 minutes instead of two hours.
Right.
So, you could potentially have a history in an English in a day. You could.
And so, I'm just thinking, students with language-based issues, that's a really long goal for those kids.
Sure, sure. It is. And I think what we would do is, a case-by-case basis with those students, and with their special educational liaison, we would probably make some arrangements around their mid-year schedule that would look a little bit different.
Or take one during the makeup session or something.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep.
Because that is, from what I've heard from students, that is one of the benefits of how we have it now, is.
Correct.
You have a writing one with a science or a math.
Correct. Correct. Yep.
To note, some of these exams are our common measures. And I want to just thank John personally for his ability, the capacity of the educators, the students, everybody coming together, long conversations, we sat in some staff meetings, we're grappling with this. So, I think that, let's, you know, try it. So, does that mean?
Sorry. I have one other question. Well, you used to have an academic standards committee?
Yes.
Do you still have that?
Yes, and it went through then.
And then, okay.
Correct. Absolutely. Yep, we follow that process.
And I think, well, when we send it to the parents, that's a great thing to say.
Yeah, academic standards, department chairs, absolutely. We vetted it in two full faculty meetings, so we really gave it thought. We also received feedback from students as well.
So, I'm sorry, just an implementation question. So, if two different his, do then, each teacher have his or her own final for the, or mid-year for that course?
Yes. Yeah, you can still have common assessments with perhaps a test on being exactly. So, there may be A version, B version, similar to one. But yes, the expectation is, the students would still have a similar experience. It would not be as though you have teacher X, and you get this, and then teacher Y gets something completely different. Yep. And then finally, the last couple are for educators. We have, we discussed at a faculty meeting this year, opportunities for our teachers to collaborate more and to have more interdisciplinary. We know that high schools can naturally be isolated because they're department-based, and you've got, you know, a lot of requirements to get done with your core content. Yet, in our feedback surveys, in the Massachusetts, is it the retail? Not the retail, but the.
Tells.
The tells. Thank you. Tells feedback, as well as our own school council feedback and from faculty feedback. They want to have more of those opportunities. In fact, I've got six teachers who are collaborating across all different departments using Google Classroom. So, they're, this summer, actually doing some of their professional development time around that, and they're going to be comparing it using their own academic discipline. So, we're excited. The evidence of accomplishment will be some actual proposals and projects designed. We will tie it in with some of our summer curriculum work, so that in order to be approved, I've got to see a product from it. I want to see it, something at the end to say, okay, what's this going to look like? So, that's something we're excited. And then the final one, provide additional training, support, and strategies for teachers who have students who may be ELL, Special Education Qualified for a 504 Plan. We are seeing some increases, not necessarily in the number of special education students, but increases with our L population. We are also, from time to time, we have influx of some 504s, some of which could be temporary. And I think that the training and the support is critical for our teachers, so that those students can be provided the same access as everybody. We have great resources in place for them. I'm looking at strategies and instructional practices in the regular classroom for these kids. So, it's great that we have support, say a liaison or a guidance council who's working with 504, but I want the classroom teacher to be developing these strategies and skills so that they can seamlessly use it in the classroom.
I just wanted to draw your attention, the metro S data programs in place as part of your packet. John has used some of this data to inform his student success goals. So, I just want, it's for informational purposes only. It's a work in progress. We actually met as a wellness group yesterday and started to add some other things that have happened, but you can see the correlation. 2010, 2014, we have, you know, these three cohorts of data, Dara Johnson, Laura McGovern, and.
Laura, Dara, and Andrea.
Andrea, excuse me. Thank you. Andrea Merritt, and we'll continue to need to think about what are our next steps for this data. Also have consultative schedules. I just, you mentioned it in your home group, and here is some of the data synthesized. They haven't had a full chance to look at it and look at the specifics of the Dover Sherborne data and maybe present one.
This was, you talked about, we received the actual numbers, it was two, two months ago.
We heard, we saw preliminary data. The actual data came, I think, last week. So, the binders are in the superintendent's office, and will be distributed to those individuals for further analysis.
And then, at some point, I know in the past, we've been provided DS results, and then the overall sample peer community.
Correct. That will take place, yeah.
I don't know what's, when it's been done before, but we can find it.
So, we'll go back, and I will make a motion. I'm going to help you along here, Michael. I'll make a motion to approve the high school's school improvement plan for 2015-16.
Second?
Any permanent discussion? Call in favor?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we leave, John, when we were at the joint meeting earlier, there was a discussion of an update on hirings. Michael, I don't know if you want to do this now or in the other.
We're kind of working our way through the agenda, so we might as well. At this point, since I pulled the, his study in it accidentally.
So, Karen, did you want to, because not all the regional school committee were here for that discussion?
Yes.
We wanted to go back to it?
Yes. There are several updates for the regional school committee. Unfortunately, I left that paper when I went back to my office, so I'm going to do it from memory. The .4 math educator has been hired and recommendations coming forward. The full-time math and physics educator has been hired and has gone forward. The, the, uh, science.
.6 biology.
.6 biology.
They are in the final stage, and we have teaching lessons taking place Thursday and Friday.
The .4 ELA educator has been posted internally. We have two internal applicants and one external candidate.
So, that was our discussion at the joint meeting, John was. So, we've posted it internally only, but we have an external candidate.
Right.
How does that work with HR policy, rules, laws? You know, do we need to post that externally so others also can apply?
I think that would be wise. Yes, I do. I do think that would be wise. We would obviously give consideration to any of those internal candidates, as well as the one external candidate we have. But I think, yeah, we follow the process, we have followed with all of our other positions.
Okay. Because that seemed like something we should do. And the other issue that we touched on and we didn't really discuss in length was, it's a .4 position, but if a person was a 1.0 at the middle school and wanted to apply for that .4, they could, and then leave a hole in the middle school for the .4 to be filled?
Yes, correct. So, Mr. Kellett and I have had some discussions, because two of the candidates are from his building.
Right.
Who have expressed some interest. One is a part-time faculty member.
Who already is a .4.
Right. So, that would, but the other one right now is a 1.0 and would then ask for a split, a .4, .6 split.
So, in that outcome, we need to post a .4 at the middle school, and the other probably.
Right. But my question is, is that in the best interest of the district?
Does that schedule support that?
And does the schedule support it? Right. Which is up to you guys. It's really not our role to have a say in that.
May I say, it is practical, and sometimes it's a great professional development tool for both the high school and the middle school, and it's also a great transition for kids. Sometimes if they've known someone at the middle school and then find them again at the high school, so there is some transition.
I'm not saying that person is the person.
I see both sides of it, but I would want to make sure we got the best candidate for DF, so here's our opportunity to do so.
And both the middle school and the high school.
Correct.
So, we, so we do have, I know at least one teacher who moved back and forth between. But my understanding is, that's, schedule-wise, that's problematic. And I would just worry that, whatever its other benefits, it would create yet more scheduling problems, which you might solve for the grown-up.
Yeah.
But it might actually introduce problems for kids that we haven't even met yet.
Yeah, absolutely. Typically, our two-three split, so if somebody teaches two sections in one building and three in the other, that is fine. It's when it's one and four, that's a problem.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, absolutely, we, Mr. Kellett and I have discussed that too, that they have the right to apply. Obviously, there's not guarantee. And ultimately, we have to do this in the best interest of students.
Which is, you know, I fully trust the process with Casey as student ELA department chair.
And it's the same process as any other position.
It is, absolutely. So, we have, the departments will meet in small groups. They put forward names. I then meet with the department chair and names that they put forward. We have those people teach lessons with students. You know, sometimes we're close on time. We've been able to do that with science, with math. And then from there, I put a recommended candidate forward to the superintendent.
Do you want to move on to central office updates? Nice transition.
Post-sedic external. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'm actually going to go over the superintendent's report. And the first item in the superintendent's report happens to be the second item on the agenda under Presentation, Discussion, and Action. So, if that's okay for me to move that forward. Parking research. At your last regional school committee meeting, you had asked for some surveying to happen for the driveway. That has yet to be completed, because they're looking actually for some documents, some deaths reflected here. And they'll make a little bit of the two plans and then establish those accurate lines. But additionally, you asked for some information about what it would take to pave the bus pad and what would be the additional parking spaces that might be agreed from that. We have a price of $30,000, and the highway director estimates there'll be about 50 parking spaces in addition to be able to park the buses up there, too. I think there are eight buses that are parked up on that bus pad. Another parking consideration includes removing the burn that's between the existing Another parking consideration includes removing the berm that's between the existing parking lots. That could cost about $15,000 and will result in 12 parking spaces. So I guess we'll look forward, what is the will of the regional school committee for next steps? Knowing we had allocated that specific amount for the survey and I have not heard differently that there's additional funding needed for the survey work of the parking situation.
So given our discussion later about E and D and the monies.
How much is the parking pass?
$275 is a two-year payback.
That was my question.
Two-year payback.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems to me
However, but there was, I can't remember which conversation I was in. It was raised that it wasn't clear that the administration wanted to have 50 student parking spots back there because that means they then need to monitor two different parking lots at the same time.
Can they be teacher spots or guest spots or?
Well, but in that case though, we're spending $30,000 and not getting anything for them.
No, teachers are parking there.
Yeah, but we don't charge the teachers to park there.
Because the kids are parking other places. It's not, it means we would still sell more
So should we put this through the capital subcommittee and then have it brought back to them a little more about?
If you're going to
No, we need to do it now.
Would you go for next year?
But if you want to do it this fiscal year, the work has to be completed.
I think the more, the smarter thing would be to take care of that berm. I just watched an entire wall pole, parents like on top of each other in cars as they were trying to leave. That is so dangerous out there, the flow of that parking lot. I think if you could take that berm out, make that parking lot more logical, you might even pick up more than 12 spots and do that first, that would be the smartest thing that we could do on this campus.
And then maybe look at the other, the bus pad as a capital issue within 16.
I was going to say
That's what I would recommend.
It seems to me we need more than 12 spots, so.
Well, how many spots are we, you know, how many kids are on the waiting list? What are our numbers there?
So at the beginning of the school year, we typically can service as many students, you know, that come forward. It's probably by November, December, we start creating a lottery.
Lottery for juniors?
Yes.
And seniors, if you haven't bought your pass yet.
But keep in mind that the class we graduated was 150 and the next couple are 175. So that is the classes that are fighting for some of the lockers and things that go back to junior high days.
The only question I have is around management and what you guys want to do.
So I appreciate that that's two lots and you can have
My preference would be to focus on this one student lot here, see what we could do with it. I agree. In addition, it would only be 12 spots, but I think from a safety standpoint, it would also allow us to manage cars.
And I do think, John, we need visitor spot. We have no visitor spots. On the mornings, we have PTO or if you're dropping something off, you know, it would be nice to at least have four spots open in the front.
Because we need to get parking up in the main office and that.
And, and I know the teachers don't want to park at the bus pad and walk over, but it may be that that's the only spot for the space.
Food service, I know, has come to me and said they can't park. They get here and say
Right, I know, and the people can't park.
Television guys want a spot or two? I got you.
Right now, is there a proposal? I just caught a little off because one, I wasn't here for the last month's discussion. But second, I wasn't sure that we, oh, we're bringing forward a recommendation to spend money for one or both of these projects out of this year's budget to be completed over the summertime.
I would, I would like to bring the project to fix the parking lot here.
I think one, but not both. I think, I think maybe eventually both, but the $30,000 one is a bit, bit much without doing a little bit more research.
Well, the whole point of this surveying too is that we may actually have more spots than we, we haven't finished the surveying. The reason we're doing the surveying is because it might be there are spots we have currently lost, which we discover in fact, we haven't lost.
Well, those aren't even real spots. They're dirt that people park on, right?
But it's still, these aren't real spots.
So could we ask maybe, talk about the berm and say, let's fix that. But then say to John, think about, and because we've talked about, we might have to meet once in the summer. You know, is there a plan that would work for the other part? To solve the other issues?
Right. The parking lot spots as you are heading out to junction, if, if we were able to finalize what we have there, that helps us a lot because we, members of the science department and middle school staff park there. So if they are parking there, that does free up our middle spot for more spots. Right now, they're, you know, there and here and
And they're going both ways in one.
So I would say my, I would, I would be in favor of fixing the problem here and then from a management perspective, figuring out what the right asset allocation is for what we have. And then if it makes sense to have 50 more spots or 40 more spots, whatever the number is, then that would come out of that analysis, I think.
Well, and I think long-term we do, at least in the next five years, we need more spots.
But that's a capital question in my mind. So it's not for us to vote tonight.
So make a motion.
I would like, I would make a motion to solve the berm problem. For it not to exceed, what was the number in there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Should we give them a little bit of overage? So
That's why we're building in that extra, what, 15%?
We've been doing 15%. So 15 of 15 is, is 12, so 17.5?
Do we have a second? Second? Do we have further discussion on specifically that motion? Karen?
It's just honestly, it's like you're talking 12 spots for 17.5 versus 50 for 30.
No, it's safety. To me, it's a safety problem.
It's just, it's the first I've ever heard of it being an issue, but other people seem to have more experience. So it's just, it's never come up and all of a sudden we're saying it's a safety issue. It's like, how come it's never come up then?
So, so John, that whole area will be paved and that may then change where you drive in and how you drive out of there?
We have to work on that.
Yeah, it would give more flexibility in the
And so that, this estimate includes the ability to paint and do some restriping or whatever is needed. Call in favor? Not opposed?
So to continue on the superintendent's report.
And in that, do we need to specify a particular line item?
No, I'll take it out of the extraordinary maintenance line item because in effect, it wasn't a planned expenditure.
And, and we, do we have to vote any movement of dollars for budget items or is that not
No, what we do, in September, you'll get a, you'll get a listing
That's right. Getting ahead of myself, a couple of months. And then other items for the central office?
There are changes to the low-income calculation. You have that documentation in your calendar. Basically, what it's saying is that students, we no longer use free and reduced lunch. We do what's called the community eligibility program, which is based on SNAP, traditional assistance for families or the recruitment of children and families. So our numbers for free and reduced lunch, which could affect chapter 70 and our federal grants, could go down based on that percentage. We don't know right now what that is, but Steve wanted to make you aware.
The impact that you read is clearly to shift some of the monies towards the poor, poor communities. So there obviously will be an impact to the wealthier communities. To what extent do you know?
And I, I haven't read this carefully enough and I'm sure the answer is in there. That shift is coming out of what funds at the local and regional level?
If it affects the foundation budget, it will affect our chapter 70 funding, possibly our transportation as well, any state aid, the grants, the title grants. Because a lot of that is based on income qualifications.
And you can read the rest. I don't know if there's any stuff specific in the superintendent's report that you wanted to ask any questions about.
I just wanted to point out on the public forums for park, we have asked for tape or DVD of those sessions. So it will be available till after midnight. Maybe Richard is not interested, but the rest of us might actually want to be
Was it the way I raised my eyebrows?
And also, has John Kirby voted boys TBL coach?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought so.
Which TV?
John Kirby was voted TBL.
The women's coach award is new, but not the, the boys' coach.
And I just wanted to, I provided a comprehensive update on our district goals this year as they relate to wellness, education evaluation, the curriculum revision. I've spoken about it numerous times, but just to encapsulate it in one place. If you have any specific questions about what you're doing here, I don't want to go next.
You have been building on these for next week, on the 16th.
That's correct.
So I think they'll be in the K12 environment or community environment, the best place to raise those those questions and comments. We are now on to the business manager's report and the E and D discussion. And I think we have several people in the audience who are anxiously waiting at that point in the meeting.
First of all, I think maybe I should give a little bit of an education, trying to walk everyone through the status of appropriations. There are, there are some outline items that we, we don't income to the fund. We just project out when we're coming up with what we believe our E and D number to be. So for example, if you look at the, that's just one page. If you look at the balance in utilities, right now we have $130,000. But we're actually suggesting a surplus of only about $45,000, $50,000. Because we still have bills outstanding. And we just, we keep a running tab and look at previous years. These are just line items that are unpredictable and can really come up. But we do do projections. That, that's about the biggest one in healthcare. The healthcare, again, that doesn't have all of the expenses against it. We still have in revenues. The revenues we receive for the retirees have to get booked. We still have those outstanding for the month of June. But right now, we're anticipating about $130,000 will be the favorable variance on healthcare. So these are the things that are generating some of the E and D. Healthcare, if you recall, last year, we were actually over expended by $32,000. So we obviously didn't use the nine slots, so to speak, for changes in plans due to unexpected, new hires or whatever. So I, does anyone have any more questions on the actual status of appropriations?
Well, we have
I just have an informational question. What is the, the long-term debt retirement? What is that? And it's 206,492.
That was a, you've got to look at that line below.
Okay, so that, they
That, 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 that's
They have each other.
Yeah, okay, so that's just
Though, though then right next to it though is an unexpected cost for bond issuance. Is that, oh, is that, no.
That's the refunding.
That's the refunding.
But Michael, if, when you get the final revenue report, you'll see that.
It'll be there.
As well as bond proceeds. That all has to come through the general.
No, I just, yes, but right now it shows up as a $90,000 unfavorable variance. But that's what I thought it was, not going to hit any of those that side and it just happens to be.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that was what that was.
So, so that kind of gives you an idea of some of the expense side of the house that may be showing more of a favorable variance, but we do factor, you know, projections in.
In, in the superintendent's budget, is there a reserve? And then we ended up not tapping that reserve? I forget where we have our reserve numbers.
In the superintendent's budget, there's about a $60,000 reserve. That primarily helps to offset the extraordinary maintenance in
Remember, we transferred it from that to
That's what I'm trying to remember where, where it is. So, so what we just voted is an example for doing the berm.
Right, that's right.
Okay. But we didn't have things like boilers or whatever where we tapped last year. Correct? I remember.
What?
This year, we did not have those extraordinary boiler expenses or some of those other things that we used against the reserve like we've done in past years.
So, any other questions? So then if you go to this E and D 10-year analysis, you can see we definitely have an aberration as far as E and D is concerned this year. Historically, on average, over this 10-year period, when I calculated, it comes to like $840,000 a year, which is on average, or about 4.3%. And the school committee voted a policy, I believe, a range of between 375 and 450 was where they would like to see E and D. So the two major items that are creating this anomaly, as I call it, is the state aid, chapter 70. It's unprecedented since I've been here that we've actually seen an increase of chapter 70 to the magnitude that versus what we budgeted. We actually saw an additional $203,000 in chapter 70 in FY15 over budget. I haven't seen that since I've been here. So, so that's an anomaly. So if you take that 843 and add on that 200, that gets you up to a million dollars, basically, a million 50. Then the other anomaly we have is the legal settlements for the contract. And that's another $200,000. I commend the school committee for doing such a great job on the, on the contract settlement. You add that back in, now you're up around a million 3, which is putting us over the 5% allowed by law. Now by law, we can't go higher than 5%. Does anybody have any questions at this point? So given that, we started to look at options for school committee, given the magnitude. Every percentage point on E and D equals $229,000. So we're almost like $229,000 over what's allowed by law. There was a law recently, there are three options the school committee has. One is they could always give it back to the towns to a reduction in assessments. The second is they could set up a stabilization fund. That's not realistic, given the tight timetable we have, because that actually needs to go to town meeting of the two communities. The third would be this newly created transportation reimbursement fund. The rationale for that fund that was established is the governor has the, in their minds, they have the legal ability to do what they call 9C reductions. They don't have to go back to the legislature and can make mid-year state aid budget cuts. In my career in the state of Massachusetts, I've seen that happen three times. This one was unprecedented. We lost all the increase in proposed regional transportation aid. In the six years I've been here, I've seen transportation aid actually come in at 180 at the lowest amount and 355 at the highest. That's the scope and the magnitude of the change that can occur between the time we actually budget and the time we actually know what we're getting. And it can wreak havoc on a community, especially if it's mid-year. Mid-year means you have to go twice as deep to, to achieve the cuts. That's why we've, the administration is recommending that the school committee create a transportation, regional transportation reimbursement fund and put an amount not to exceed $250,000 into that fund. What the law provides, and I provided data on that, the actual legislation and interpretation by Desi, which I also had two phone conversations with just to make sure our interpretation of what they were saying was in tune with what we were thinking, both Jim Eggit and myself, the treasurer. myself, the treasurer. And they, they basically told us that the school committee can establish this fund, the money for 15 could be transferred into this fund, and, but if it's not utilized, meaning if we do not, if we do not take any of 16's transportation expenses and apply that against that, then it falls out into the 16 E and D.
I'm confused. I'm sorry, I had you right until then. So, just say what you said again, and I'll see if I can figure out your questions.
You put the 15 receipts into the fund, in effect. You get to hold on to that, that money in that fund to, to the end of June of next year, 16, FY16. If not, they're gonna.
If you have a reason that you have to spend.
Right, they're gonna make you put it back in E and D.
Then it goes into E and D, and then if that bunch of E and D, too much, can you put it right back?
But as it was explained to me when this first came up, the intent would be to spend transportation dollars against that fund.
Correct.
So that during FY16, we can reevaluate where we stand and then look at other items. My guidance was one-time items to then potentially vote to use for that, in the sense it's a, it's a placeholder for now, and then we have next year to make a decision. And it's an informed decision because we, we get through the December, early January time period when 9C cuts are proffered, if there is a need for the state to, the governor to do that.
One way or the other, we can transfer expenses into that fund. And in effect, what that does is it frees up appropriations for other purposes, for example, capital. And you could actually have that done at the town meeting and affect it to FY16.
So, so the goal was, since we're encountering this late in the year, this in effect takes the can down six months, and we can have a more fully informed decision of our options of what to do with this. And again, that's why I think the administration is proposing this.
And also protecting us against 9C cuts.
Right.
Because with Baker's first year, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Right.
And then we're not sitting there pulling our hair out in, in January.
Free you into, the whole issue on.
Right, the earlier issue of changing what's low income could change every number of what you have.
So I all wanna hear what these guys have to say in just a minute.
But first, I.
But, but I, I still, I'm still feeling fuzzy on this, so forgive me. So, so let's say that we, we budget what we think is appropriate, and we end up suffering 9C cuts. Right at the moment, we're, we're stuck, right? If we had this fund with some money in it, and those 9C cuts came along, then we'd say, ah, look, we put aside this money into our budget, this money disappears into our budget, and everything's hunky-dory, and we just keep going.
Correct.
Well, it, it doesn't disappear.
Well, actually, you're paying your reach, not transportation.
I can't hear one person, two people at a time.
It doesn't disappear, it, it, it is used to replace revenue.
Yeah, yeah.
That is what he meant.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it disappears into our budget.
I think Paul said the same thing.
And then if, if the money's sitting there and we don't use it, and we come up to the end of the fiscal year, whatever money we have put in there now goes into our E and D, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And if that doesn't put us over the 5%, then we say, ah, we're, we're done. If it does put us over the 5%, then what has to happen to those funds which have just joined our E and D?
It would, it would revert back to the town.
Not as we are just about to do, possibly go back into that same fund?
Well, you could take, then you could take your 16 receipts.
Okay. So, so, so this money has a date attached to.
That's correct.
That says, you can use it for this budget, but at that, but if you don't, give it back to the town.
Unlike all our.
But then new money.
But I think that the spirit is, we would revisit this December, January, February, and say, we put this off, now what, now what do we want to do with this money? And we have a variety of options at that point.
I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah.
The cap on the 5% E and D was made for a purpose, which is so that people like us don't say, oh, we could use that money, we could use that money.
Right.
And the question is, how, how does this system prevent that? And you just explained it to me that you have to revert it, even if you're about to put the same number of dollars because you have an excess from somewhere else. And we can also take non-excess money, right? And, I mean, we could load all kinds of money.
You could put the entire transportation aid in that, up to that amount.
Right.
So, I, I think to Michael's point though, when we did mean, there's so many unknowns at this stage of the game. I was looking at the state aid numbers, just between governor's house one for 16, the House Ways and Means final, and Senate final, and there's like a $100,000 swing, $80,000 swing. So, I mean, these are the unknowns we face. We don't have the luxury of having any amount of free cash. We don't, we have a $62,000 reserve.
Okay, now I have another question.
So, okay.
Well, the other question is this, what if we are, what if we put this money here, we're actually fully funded through the year for transportation, but we end up with some other extraordinary expense? Can I say, oh, I want to use this to fix my boilers?
We're never fully funded.
Well, first of all, we will be billing or using that fund to pay our transportation costs, so the money won't actually be in that account, the money will be sitting in our general fund, right?
Right. Unless we want to use the money, in effect, it frees up, if we transfer 200,000 of 16's expenses for transportation and charge it against that fund, it frees up 200,000, which A, falls out to free cash.
Or becomes.
Or B, can be expended.
And, and that is the, where I thought this conversation was going, but to be deferred to be a committee-based decision with input from our financial liaisons sometime mid-year next year. That we're putting a hold on what to do with what appears to be an unusual amount of surplus this year that not only refreshes our E and D, but takes it above and beyond the statutory limit. And so I think what's in front of us really is, do we want to have a final decision about what to do with these funds tonight, in terms of, now is when we need to make the decision to remit them back to the towns? Or pushing this off for six months and seeing resolutions of this budget, if we have any 9C cuts again, pop up unsurprisingly, whatever, and, and have a fully engaged debate than about the right way to use this money?
You could also have revenue straw pools, even in other, other, we have a budget of, say, 23 million.
But I think that's, that's what's in front of us, as, as I understand it, and.
I'm sorry, why, I, I probably just misunderstood what you said, but don't we have to decide now what to do with this money because of the E and D question?
Now, in terms of, if we, we have to make a decision tonight of the three options Chris laid out. One option's not available to us, so we're down to two options. One option, as we say, we, we remit the funds back to the towns coincidentally at the end of this fiscal year.
Oh, you're saying the other option is hold on to.
The other option is hold.
And then have the.
To me, it's a push things off, it's not make a decision, it just says, we will, we will revisit this in approximately six months.
Trust us, we're gonna come back and.
Well, we have.
But it's in that transport fund, right?
No, there's no decision.
At some point, the town's gonna get the benefit of this, it's just timing.
Oh, I understand, but it's not, of course.
Right, and it's not to say to the towns, you know, you're not gonna have a benefit from this.
So are there other questions, comments from?
Given the unknowns, I think that it's the right thing to do. There's just too many unknowns out there, so I would be more inclined. I, I, I think it's a good idea to put it into the transport reimbursement fund.
I agree.
So engage our, our partners here.
Well, so Richard, picking up on, on your spot, we review in six months. We review in six months, and what are the options in six months?
If, if the school committee decides there's no need for the use of these funds, it automatically will go back to the towns.
Does it go back to the towns? It goes into E and D, and so we could use it to, to lower the assessment.
Correct.
I think our commitment is to consciously talk about how we will work with the, whatever the final number is, if it's 210,000 or 215 or 237,000, that we would have an engaged conversation about, do we factor it into, how do we factor it into FY16 spending or FY17's budget or FY17 capital? I think there's a whole variety of, of ways, and I think we need to be committed to this being a, the same level of scrutiny and discussion of a, of a spending decision as we go through in our annual budgeting process. It's the choice of, do we want, do we want to remain and keep that flexibility or remit it back to the towns today?
Right, so sorry, Brooke, it's not just the assessment, it's the other things.
Well, it, it makes me a little nervous, just having this out there. When I read the statute, it was pretty clear what should be done. It states right there that if there's an overage over 5%, it should go back to the towns.
Did you read the amendment to the statute? Because that's really what created this fund.
I read what you had included in the package.
All right, there was an amendment that clearly allows you to put this money aside for one year period.
Right, which was in the package.
Right.
Right, right. And I guess, the way I look at this is, and it's hard for me to speak for the entire committee, the entire committee doesn't even know this, and, but as a general rule, we would prefer to fund for current items with current dollars and then use future budgets to fund for future needs. So I, I'm just not sure that, I mean, I, I think it makes sense in some regards, I get nervous when, when I hear, well, we could use it for a whole host of things. I would feel better if it was earmarked for transportation, because then I would know that, okay, that's transportation money in there, and it's not gonna get lost.
But we've already, in a sense, fully budgeted for transportation, so I, I wanted to be clear and, and transparent that really this was a placeholder action. I didn't want people to walk away from this meeting thinking it was dedicated for transportation, because the minute we disperse money out of that funds against our transportation costs for next year, we will effectively underspent the operating budget in transportation. So, again, I, I just wanted us to be transparent, I think this is a holding pattern decision.
If I may, I understand your concerns, but the problem is, as I indicated, the spread on transportation is so, it's such an unknown. I don't, the reason why Maz was a heavy supporter of this, who actually got this legislation through, was they tried to discredit the governor's credibility to do 9C cuts on transportation aid, regional transportation aid. However, they didn't want to go down the legal route, because that's so time-consuming. So I think this was their way of assisting regions to have some insulation. Now, there may be some, some downside to that, the way it's set up, but I think it's better than not having any type of flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, again, the, the insulation is, if, if 9C cuts were to, to come up again, and then by January or so, we would be, for the most part, aware of any of those. And again, that's what triggers this to be teed up as a full discussion about what is the appropriate use of the, these funds. That, I think that's what is in front of us.
I, I guess, one problem that I have with this is that if I look at the, the school committee line, I have 204,621 dollars, that is the very top of the.
It's the contract settlement.
It's the contract, basically. And so it seems to me that the people, the taxpayers, put aside, funded a very large amount of money for the contract that didn't get used in the contract, okay? But that, and so it was a sort of a safety measure for that. And now, you know, and so I, my feeling is that, you know, we gave that thinking we might need it, it turned out we don't need it, so why not give it back to us? And one of the things that I hear tonight is, we'll earmark it for transportation, and then we'll start spending our transportation out of this, and then we'll be, we'll, we won't have, as you said, we'll have underspent our transportation, and we can use that for other things in FY16 if we want to, but that, those things weren't the will of the town at the time that this was voted, that, that money was voted for particular.
I don't, I don't think, Mary, we're saying other things in 2016.
Well, no, I, I, again, as this was originally presented to me, it, we have fully funded the transportation budget.
Right.
And that is the consequence of this, and I just don't want people to get a misunderstanding. This is, this is delaying the decision of how to disperse these funds or revert it back to the town.
But that discussion will have to be an open discussion.
Well, except the town.
The school committee is eventually to vote on that.
Technically, the towns don't get to vote on this discussion right now, that's why we're entering into a dialogue.
So to that point, Mary, in any given year, that amount of money that goes into E and D is, is no different to that 200,000 in the contract settlement line. It's, it's no different, it's all the same.
It's much larger.
It happens to be.
Because it was.
It, no, well.
There's two, I mean, two.
It's earmarked very clearly.
For a single item, it's very large.
200,000 dollars.
We flowed an awful lot more than that in aggregate, but just not in one single item.
But this is, you know, very specific.
Can I, can I, let me try a recharacterization here and see if I'm wrong. Currently, we have E and D, which acts as a buffer from year to year, so that we don't have to run back to the town if something extraordinary happens. And, and that's a pretty big buffer, and we use it to, to slosh back and forth 100, 150.
I don't think a million three is a big buffer.
No, whatever, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, but let him finish.
It's a, it's a tiny buffer, and we use it, we use it wisely, and, and from, from year to year, it's, you know, we're, we're down 150 grand, we're up 150 grand.
Right.
This legislation allows us to expand the size of our buffer with some constraints. It's not, in fact, constraint on transportation spending. We, it's called a transportation fund, but it's not, because we can use it to spend anything we want. It's only got a time constraint on it, if you've got a big surplus, you throw it in there and then either use it or lose it, not lose it, use it or return it to its rightful owners after, you know, when fiscal year comes up. So it's really just a way of increasing in these times of extraordinarily uncertain, extraordinary uncertainty in the state budgeting process to increase our buffer a little bit more. Is that fair contribution?
That's exactly how Jay Sullivan and I discussed it. I just didn't want.
And you weren't even there, Richard.
I wasn't even there.
That's exactly why. Because there are so many uncertain things out there.
So then the question is, and I'll take the, the standpoint I'm not sure I agree with, why do we need it? We have this, not large, but we have this sizable E and D, which we can use to absorb the very kinds of costs that we're talking about setting up this fund for. What's its special value? Just that we happen to have money we can put into it that otherwise will revert to the towns? I don't think that's a special value.
The special value is your rating, E and D, your rating, okay? Just like the towns are concerned about their AAA rating, the region should be concerned. All right? And it's also a cash flow.
Well, do we, I mean, is there some threat to our rating that we didn't know about?
No, but we just were reaffirmed, and they, they have all of this information.
I see this is, is, we are going through times of transition. In six months, we'll have settled into a new business manager, we'll have six months of a 12-month interim superintendent, we'll be going into another superintendency, we'll be going into contract. be going into contract negotiations, and just at this moment, it's, I don't think we can get to the right decision here, and I saw nothing wrong with putting this off for a six-month period of time, and again, engaging the towns in this discussion about what to do with these funds after we get through this transition. And after, honestly, you know, what could come up, I was very surprised that the state suddenly had a revenue problem this year, it didn't seem like the Massachusetts economy was having any issues. So the fact that we're not getting a consistent level of management at the state level, and they can pull funds away from us at any moment at the regions, I was surprised by that. And so I think get by enough six months to see how things play out, both locally and at the state level, is worthwhile, and we're not making a decision to do anything with these funds until that, that point in time.
We did get a big increase in Chapter 71, though, not in E and D.
Unforeseen.
No, but we had a large, we had a large increase in 71 that was taken away.
Right.
And, and I think, at the time that those cuts were taken away in the winter, spending was slowed. So, again, I, I just think it's, we don't lose anything, in my perception, maybe not yours, by delaying this by six months, and we just get through these other transitions that we've been focused on, and then we revisit this when we have either a compelling plan of how to use it, or a compelling confidence that we should write.
We don't need it.
We don't need it, and, and we, I don't know how you collect less on an assessment for next year.
That's what it is.
And all it is, is the difference between rolls into your free cash as of the 30th, or next year's free cash.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I understand totally what you're saying, it's just, you know, it's very hard to get money back from people once they concede, we could get this if we.
And again, I'm saying, we're not making any decisions about this, and I don't think we're putting any, any encumbrances on this money, it's just, let's just put this decision off for six months, get through these transitions.
And, Mary, if we were going to have that discussion, you know, we would have you guys at the table, and there would be discussion beforehand, so, you know, I mean.
Yeah, and we don't have, and by we, I don't mean, I mean the town.
And this gives you guys a chance to, to raise it in front of your full committees as well, and have all 18 of you come through with the next time this comes up to participate in the discussion.
I'm always forgiving a fair to them.
Would you like to motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. They're in the packet.
So the, the first one is, it's right here.
The Regional School Committee votes, the motion to establish the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund as allowed under Chapter 233 of the Acts of 2014 Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16C. On the second part, the Regional School Committee, the motion to transfer an amount not to exceed $250,000 into the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund.
I would hold off, as we haven't discussed.
Okay, so let's do the first two. So that is a two-part motion, to set up the fund and then to.
So moved.
To exceed, not to exceed $250,000.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Thanks, Chris.
So the, the second item, I don't know if you want to talk to it, if you want me to talk to it, is, is to, to expropriate, to appropriate.
Feels like that's.
Money from, from this year's budget to be placed into our unemployment compensation fund. And, that is used because the, the district does not participate in the state unemployment fund, so if we were to have unemployment claims because we've let go of staff, when they place a claim in the state, it comes back and we pay for it. So, in the absence of, it's self-insured, so in the absence of having a reserve, then if there was a point in the future where, let's say you needed to reduce salaries by $200,000, you actually have to go higher, because if you have not reserved, you would then have to be able to afford any unemployment claims that are made, and that could go up to, what, approximately 50% of the salaries that you pick up on the budget. So my understanding is, is that the reserve right now is low, and I think this is, in a sense, a very good countercyclical decision to make, so that at some point in time, if we did need to reduce staff, either for budgetary reasons or for declining enrollments, we have funds set aside to pay for unemployment claims.
Just a, just a question, what's a typical claim?
It depends on, it depends, but it could go as high as $20,000 for one person.
Okay, and the only people who are eligible for that are people who are laid off, no, not, no one who retired or leaves of their own free will is eligible for this.
Well, they leave on their own free will, but it wasn't really that. There are, there are some special cases, but most of the time, we believe a lot of those cases, if they try to, and go to, go to here.
Right.
So, anytime somebody leaves a position, theoretically, they could come and file a claim, whether you're in a, you know, municipality or a private business, anyone is exposed to this, differences in private business, the claims will be paid, it just can come back to hurt you in your future rates.
Right, but I thought you're only eligible for unemployment if you are fired, basically.
Again, you can have situations where people come back and file a claim.
Or if, if they reduce a 1.0 MTE, I don't know, 0.6, they can collect the difference.
Yeah, laid off, not fired, but laid off.
Oh, I know.
So do you have?
I, I know.
So are there any other clarifying questions?
What, when you, this is, this says not to exceed $50,000, and why aren't we just voting a number?
Because we don't have a final.
Oh, this is going to wait until we close out.
Yeah, I mean, they're still posting revenues, so we're asking for a range. We also don't want to bring the real E and D down too low, below the policy, so we'll manage that.
So, any other?
Actually, yeah, I guess I have another question here. So, so this money, which was 125, is now 37, it sits in its own separate fund somewhere, just waiting for claims against it?
Right, what happens is someone, the state actually pays the claims and sends them out of the way.
So, so I guess I don't understand why this limit of $50,000, it seems like a great place to park money that we have extra of.
Well, but, no, but then it's, yeah, that's a, that's a designated line item, you can never.
And this was established a few years ago, and we've already gone through, what, $80,000 bucks? A few years from now, we're going to go through another $80,000.
Why don't we entertain a motion, if you'd like to amend it?
Okay, it just, it just seems, seems to me as though.
To me, I was comfortable with what was being proposed by the business office.
I was going with the proposal, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the motion that was offered by the business office that I'll read is to transfer an amount not to exceed $50,000 into the unemployment compensation fund.
So you're making that motion?
I made, I made that motion.
Second.
Second, further discussion?
Yeah, I think it should be twice that. We're going to spend it. It's just a question of what year, in the next five, six, seven years.
Well, do you want to do an amount not to exceed?
Well, we are at a.
I mean, the motion.
You're proposing to amend to go higher.
I was hoping to get there before the parliamentary procedure required me to propose an amendment to the motion, but yes. I just think, we're having this whole discussion about how we have an excess in our budget, let's start socking money away responsibly, here's a place we could sock it away responsibly, because we don't.
But do we need this?
But if we don't need, I mean, at a certain point.
We're saying we don't need that.
You know, it's like, I, I'm not, you know, we could start returning money if we have too much money.
I have another question.
Okay, so which motion do you have?
All in favor?
Richard votes for it. Of course. On this section, Michael, Chris, normally at this meeting, we vote to open this set of accounts for next year.
Yeah, it used to be done, but for some reason, there's no legal requirement, we look back, last year it wasn't done.
I know it wasn't done last year, because no one did it, but we've done it every other year.
But there's no, we can do it, but there's no legal basis for it.
I think in the spirit of not going any longer than we already have.
I don't, excuse me, I don't think we had a motion on the amount of money to transfer into the transportation.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
200 non-seat cuts, $250,000.
Yeah, yeah, no, I read it on paper, I just, I didn't realize that was.
It's a two-part motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I promise. My last comment, I've been meeting with funds, and we had 14 applications for the system business managers to position me, we would have been down to four, he asked me to sit down on the interviews, which we did have today, and we'll update the school committee once him and I get to a group and talk, so, we had a good group here.
Good news.
That's good news.
Thank you.
I guess.
I think we can really, really peace you and, and even Mr. Smith, it's so bizarre.
Well, it's done.
Oh, if I may, Michael, this is my last call with me, and I'd like to.
Oh, my gosh.
I'd like to present all our school committee people advisory.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, Chris, how did we miss that?
It's been a real pleasure.
Thank you. How did we miss that?
No, no.
I don't know how we missed that.
I really.
Well, it may not be, it may not be. You're here until August, right? So, it may not be.
Why don't we have you back next week?
So everyone can say that.
Oh, that's no good.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to move that the Regional School Committee formally gives its deep heartfelt and unmitigated thanks to Chris for the extraordinary job she has done all the time she's been here. I have thought your tenure here, this being part of the motion, I'm just now speaking and discussing. I thought, I just thought you did a bang-up job, and I really, really appreciate it, not only your savvy, but your cool.
Thank you.
Here.
Have a second.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
How did we miss that?
So, appointment of subcommittees.
Was there a list?
You have the list, you have it, I have another one for you.
I did not see that list.
Wasn't in their handout, right?
Yes. So did we have? We don't have any changes to personnel, so it's more of a engaging people in horse trading, you want to get off of a responsibility, I think you have to find somebody to replace you.
Well, I'm, warrants, I'm just not here that often, and so I know it's kind of a pain for Cheryl, that she's always having to chase me down, so if there's somebody who tends to be around the school more often, it would make more sense. I'm happy to stay on it, but.
I could do warrants, I didn't mind doing that when you were away, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Laura.
And I'll be liaison to PTO with Dana on the backside.
Did anyone have an interest in capital?
Michael, you do such a bang-up job, isn't he?
Did anyone have an interest in capital?
Do we continue, do we have superintendent evaluation on there, even though we won't be evaluating an interim?
Uh.
Or do we just leave it on?
Just leave it, because we'll have it the year after.
I think the DSC, while continuing to meet with respect to.
Exactly.
Keeping the momentum going with the search.
It's the superintendent's executive committee, it's usually.
But I'm back to capital.
I can do capital again, it's fine.
Who, I, I can.
It's not an interest.
And I feel as though I should.
I'm happy enough to.
Don't make yourself sick, right?
Actually, it's well offered, it's something.
I mean, you probably shouldn't, right, because you're.
Got a lot of other.
You're probably going to be doing something. Laurie, you're the other person, if Laurie will teach me what I need to know, then yes.
Oh, God.
Well, I, I think the goal is with reorganizing of responsibilities in the business office, we, we want them to own a little more of the mechanics.
Yeah, actually.
That's.
You do less, I'd love to work, you do less, they do more.
Yeah, in fact, that, that's what my trepidation was, is that I could not do what you did, putting the whole thing together. Okay, that's fine, I'd be happy to do it.
Like it was.
Yeah.
When was she, Rachel?
Thank you, Richard. So I think what, I think the goal would be, let the business office reorg, and then maybe early September, do a cooperative, look at how we want to rejigger responsibilities and time.
And so, I become the union 50 with you guys?
Become one, sure.
Union 50, non-voting?
Yeah.
Excuse me. There is no personnel committee, as far as I can tell, it certainly never met.
I don't think you guys, it's Sick Bank is usually there.
Oh, that's right, we did meet once, in fact, we did talk about Sick Bank.
You did, you did know.
That was a really heavy lift on that one, I'll tell you, and I'll do it again.
And then, does anyone have an interest in technology, otherwise I will be better at doing this next year.
I will go as your substitute, if you can't make a meeting, how's that, Michael? I really don't want to take on more, but if, if we're not sending someone.
Is that, we don't have to vote or anything?
Nope, nope.
There is a second side to the sheet.
Yes.
Oh, there's a.
Karen, is Educated Valuation Subcommittee going to continue to meet?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, I can, just for continuity purpose, continue to do that, but I'm not sure, okay, that's fine.
I wonder if this is a misalignment, or I can't read it personally.
No, no, it's, no, he's on to it, I think, Educated Valuation.
Laurie's on Wellness, thank you.
And further down, are there those who either have a burning desire to move on to a new thing, or a burning desire to move off?
I don't, I don't mind keeping going to the school council, that's fine, it's, it's kind of fun, I mean, it's not, it's not as though it's a real burden, you just have to make sure you show up.
I'm happy to back you up on that.
Okay.
I feel the same about the middle school, I like it, yeah, it's fun.
And you're still interested in doing boosters?
Yeah, I like boosters, one of the meetings I haven't been very good at getting to is the SPAM meetings, which just was bad luck this year, so I don't know if anyone else is, wants to participate with that as well, or I'll just grab you.
Oh, how about I back you?
Okay. Sure. Okay.
So we are moving on, if we're at the point of the consent agenda, do you want me to read through it, and if anyone wants to put a hold? So the first item is Regional School Committee meeting minutes of May 5, 2015.
There's just one.
So we'll put a hold on that, one second.
Unless you're the typo.
Is it typo, or is it?
No, it just says at our next meeting, and it was at the joint meeting. Number four, bullet point C.
So do we want to amend the minutes and then boost them?
Yes.
So do I hear a?
Yes.
They're amended.
Amended, okay, all approved?
Accept it as an amendment.
Okay. The DSEF grants for 2015, '16 school year?
I have two questions.
Okay, so we'll put a hold on that. The Flexible Spending Account Amendment, the appointment of our DS Regional Treasurer, the donation acceptance of spring assistant coach compensation, and then last, donation acceptance for soccer uniforms. Okay? Did we get the motion?
I'll move to accept the consent agenda other than the one hold.
Second.
All in favor? So, let's revisit DSEF grants, and.
Mike, just two questions, quickly, was DS Robotics Team, so is that paying an appendix C ratio?
No, I don't know the appendix C ratio, but I can add it to.
Okay, I just want to make sure if it's related to the pay, that it's, the pay is at the ratio in the appendix. And then, Global Competency Certificate Program?
Yes.
I don't know much about that, and is that new curriculum? And if so, same question as before, has it gone through academic standards and everybody else, or?
It is something that is under advisement currently, I need a lot of.
I meet a lot of faculty that have attended some trainings and are looking to implement. They're trying to put together a meeting myself, Mr. Smith, to share the results of their research.
So then you'll come to our meeting and we'll talk about it and approve it.
And it's part of the civics, if you look at John Smith's School and Global Competency, that's one that I'm very excited to see go over and share with you.
Yep.
And do we have a more formal way of acknowledging this joint support from the DSCF or has that been done in the past or...
You mean for the whole...
Yeah, for the whole, this is a more significant set of donations than, you know, the typical generous donation, you get a thousand here.
So, I mean, yes, we, thank you very much. I think it would be a delightful tradition to begin for the chair to draft a thank you note to the DSCF actually and send it on behalf of...
There's something dangerous about having three former chairs on this meeting.
It's so true.
It feels like having my three older sisters around and all the things that they would get needed to. And then they leave the meeting laughing.
You're so right, Richard.
Can't believe we got him to do.
May I mention that tomorrow, 3:30, is the awarding of the grants in the high school library. So if any of you would like to come...
I had a quick question about one of the grants. I know that one of the Lego Robotics teams got a grant, but there were actually two that went to the world championships. And is, I mean, I'm assuming one just didn't know they could apply. I mean, do we just say, okay, it's your, you got to figure it out or, I mean...
I'm sorry, which ones?
So there were two groups of elementary school kids who went to the world...
Those destinations...
Oh, it wasn't robotics, oh, I was thinking it was, okay, never mind then. Yeah, well, then the robotics people should have applied.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the DSCF grants for 2015-16 with our heartfelt thanks.
That's good.
You got it.
All in favor? Meeting in review. We've got meeting minutes. Do you always enjoy a little matriculation report?
Yes.
I've already sent it out to my father-in-law. He likes to see that. June enrollment report, do you have any, is this a small report we've been working our way through for the rest?
It is, and we are actually reporting at three junctures during the school year now instead of monthly.
Okay. Items for September Regional School Committee meeting? We'll hope to you guys in August.
Sounds good.
Oh, and normally we provide Cheryl our vacation schedule?
Right.
So they can keep track of when we're away?
I will nudge her to do that, particularly for warrants since there's any man who can come in. And then we are, we have a meeting scheduled, but I'm not sure what we... Given that a lot of the people who are going to participate in the meeting schedule are not yet on board, it seems like any discussions...
Are we talking about the joint meeting? Next week?
It was included and I wasn't quite sure.
I thought Dawn said something.
I can't have a national conference call in three minutes. I'm sorry. Not that I don't want to talk about meeting schedules, I just...
So Michael, I think the September agenda will fill up willy-nilly. I haven't got anything to suggest to put on it. The only thing I would suggest is to look at the last couple of Septembers because there's stuff that we're forgetting that we have to...
Yeah, I mean, there's the line item transfers and all that kind of stuff that's...
And we've got a new business manager and a new superintendent. And I'm, I'm completely to be open to what, whether or not so as well. Okay?
All right.
And we will reconvene next week as a joint committee.
Adder an, whatever time.
Great.
Nine o'clock. Good job, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.